And call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Approval of city council minutes.
Move to approve.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Adoption of agenda, item four.
Who to adopt?
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item five, second reading of ordinances. Uh, number five one, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand nineteen for the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Matthew.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the budget that is included in the packet, uh, we've had just minor changes, nothing to numbers. Um, the current number, the current beginning cash above the required reserve, uh, projected to be one million, three seventy-five. Uh, fifty percent of that is, uh, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, which is the balance that could be used to, uh, further balance the budget. Right as it stands now, the budget is using six hundred eighteen thousand of that to balance, uh, which leaves us about fifty-nine thousand that could be used to balance the rest of the budget. If, if there was something else that, uh, council, uh, wanted to add to the budget. So, yeah, if, are there any questions related to the budget? Is there anything that you've seen that you have concern with?
Seen it so many times, I think we're all over.
Yeah.
All right, just needs a simple motion as it's at second reading, I would entertain that.
Motion to approve.
This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Moving on to item six, first and second reading of ordinances, item six one. An ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Casey's addition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at three oh three North Maguire Street, three oh two, three oh eight, and three ten East Gay Street, and three oh five and three oh nine East Market Street.
Mr. Mayor, city council, this is the plat that is consistent with the zoning's that were done two weeks ago. You have a copy there in your packet, does include, uh, several lots that will be combined into one large light lot, all of which is now zoned, general business. Uh, the plat does show the existing improvements, the two houses and the existing canopy and convenience store structure on the, on the property in the plat. One of the conditions of your ordinance, maybe the only condition, yes, is that, um, while it can be approved, two of those three, doesn't matter which two, willing to be demolished before the plat can be recorded because you can only have one primary use on a lot. So, other than that, they've made all the requests that, uh, changes that staff has requested, and we would recommend approval of the ordinance as presented, planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their meeting last week as well.
And they're, they're planning to demolish all that anyway, so.
Yes, it's just a matter of timing.
Okay. As said, Bill, we move the second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes, ma'am.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Casey's addition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at three oh three North Maguire Street, three oh two, three oh eight, and three ten East Gay Street, and three oh five and three oh nine East Market Street. This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Moving on to item six two. An ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Mannerings Broadview Estates, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at eight oh five, eight oh seven, and eight oh nine Broad Street.
Yes, uh, this is a plat that is on the north side of Broad Street as you go east from Mitchell. This property and in your pack, it is, uh, if you've got it in color there, it's the lot that is, the property that's included in the plat is that which is shown by the red line there. Um, it does, if you're looking at it in black and white up here, that possibly goes all the way north through the railroad tracks, that is not the case. Um, there, the property line is, is not that far north, and in fact, the Apple Court Apartments lie north of this property, and their driveway and entrances off of Colton Street, and they are the ones that back up all the way to the railroad tracks. Railroad tracks in that line are shown because it's part of establishing the description for this piece of property, but it can make it confusing if you're looking at it in a black and white as the recorded copy will be.
Oh, okay.
Does create three lots out of the one piece of land. Uh, there is a duplex that's been constructed on the east end of the property, and you have that there shown on the plat as well as an improvement, an existing improvement. Um, there are several conditions, staff recommends approval with the five conditions, and, um, planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their meeting of the same conditions last week.
Move said, Bill, we pass the second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Mannerings Broadview Estates, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at eight oh five, eight oh seven, and eight oh nine Broad Street. This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Moving on to item seven, other business. Uh, item seven one, discussion of minimum residential lot sizes, presented by Brian Coulson.
We have a site plan layout on the ground, uh, sorry, don't have any, but this is, we did a site plan layout on the ground over there, uh, the city, um, go ahead. This is the first one we did, we came up with, uh, it's zoned at R four, we came up with sixty-four residential lots, but on the site plan here, what we're gonna do is we're gonna lose probably, uh, we showed Barb this before, we're probably gonna lose a few lots because of our setbacks on our streets and things of that nature, um, with that. So, as a developer, trying to figure out how to get something on new construction, you know, below the one eighties and the one eighties or one nineties today. We, we did another one, um, with some townhomes, and we came up with forty-five townhome lots, which would be like a fourplex split four ways, and si- similar to the ones that we put together on Pebble Creek and Clover Creek subdivision. Um, they probably have had staff meeting last week and the sideline setbacks and stuff in the quarters after talking. Robert, when we got done, we're probably gonna lose five or six lots of those on the sideline setbacks. This is back up to a collector, uh, right here, this street here, so some of this setback is gonna have to get greater. This is currently zoned R four. If we can figure out how to, what I'm asking for is right now in R one, um, in your old book, it's sixty foot locked width at the curb. Um, and the cul-de-sac setting is minimum of thirty-five, and then pies out. Trying to get something residential wise that we could sell, um, a lot of these houses today are getting twenty-six foot wide, um, you know, different areas, and there's still eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred square foot, some examples, I don't have very many, but I have enough for council. There's four or five, or four different sets there of an example of a house that would be strictly residential, not attached, um, with twenty-six to thirty foot actual build, uh, envelopes on those. So that would be similar to what we're, what I'm asking for, is if we can do something in the R four district, um, this is already zoned R four, and maybe shrink the lot size to a forty, forty-five foot lot, and then we could get more lots, um, to have, to try to hit that price point of that one eighties, um, number for new construction house that's unattached or not a townhome attached style. And the R four side, you know, over there on that particular piece of zone, or for, somebody, you know, go in there and build apartments and be four stories of apartments and have, you know, a multiple, you know, and seventeen acres, a lot of units there, and, uh, I just think right now we have a lot of apartments, and we're kind of missing the residential R one side of, of what's going on, but the cost of construction and development cost on the front end of these things is just unreal for what it used to be per foot to put a street and curbs and infrastructure in, so. That's what I was, I didn't know if we could somehow figure out if we can amend the R four district since it's already zoned R four, and limit that R one since I'm kind of going down, but keep it R four and have a smaller lot for, for these actual dwellings to fit in.
I know that, um, I mean, so you're, so you're talking about a five thousand square foot footprint thing?
Yeah, I think forty-eight hundred on it, well, you've got also the nine thousand square foot minimum on lot size, I think, in the R one book. Um, so, yeah, we'd have to, if we can do, you know, the forty-five, forty foot width and then try to do a forty-eight hundred and fifty square foot lot. The problem with this particular piece is we also butt up to this collector, um, we have a thirty-five foot setback, rear yard setback on this collector. So, uh, that's gonna limit some, some of the lots on the R one side. This gets elongated in the back of the site plan, as you can see. So, which the lots can be longer here where they are butted collector, but we just gotta make sure we don't get past that footprint of this lot, whether this street has to go on down and cut through, like Sloane and I mentioned in the staff meeting last week, but that's the actual R one, um, layout of that. But again, we're, he's got on just a site plan of sixty-four lots, and by the time we chop a bunch for the sideline setback and getting into this collectors, it's gonna probably be down in the fifties, which is, you're gonna be back up to two hundred and fifty thousand, or houses are better than we already, that's the problem trying to hit that one eighty market today with the cost of everything.
I mean, I know there's, um, there's some older builds, or, well, new builds on older lots that meet that five thousand square foot area that have, um, done real well on this market.
Yeah, one thing to consider that those lots have, um, that, I don't know, it can be helpful. When you're going down and, like, for instance, that first, uh, one he showed is a four bedroom unit with a one car garage and one space on the street.
Right.
So getting the parking on a smaller lot, some of these older lots you're talking about have done the retrofit, new build, has had an alley to work with, so they've been able to come off the backside and use their rear yard for an alley, or, or use their alley access into the rear yard for a detached garage. Um, so, so getting the parking that's required, like a three bedroom or a four bedroom requires three parking spaces, and getting, now, some of those are, look like two car garages, and so you would have that on there. Um, but getting the parking on a smaller lot has to be considered as well, so some of, some of those looks like it, it addresses that.
Yeah, I think with this one in particular, this first one is twenty foot, so your old's minimum at the curb is twenty foot, is that right? Or maximum at the curb is twenty, twenty-four foot? So, you, Barb's talking about having a kicker driveway that comes back off your city approach and has a wing for that three bedroom, so that, even though it's a one.
Well, if you're on a one, yeah, if you do a one car garage.
Yeah, if you have a one car garage, you just have to put that kicker that goes over towards the property line to have that additional parking for a three or four bedroom unit.
Well, those ones you've been over in Colton were one car garages, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We had, no, yeah, they are one car garage in a Colton, but we also had to put that kicker, uh, driveway, and similar to Eternity Village, we did those over there, but we made the driveways wide enough at the curb, but now we've got, we can't do that that way anymore.
Right.
So sometimes when you're amended something like this, since we have ordinances in place, the council's able to ordnance, change that?
Well, he's asking us to just change the ordinance, to change the standard.
You'd have to change your ordinance, I, I do believe that you have an ordinance on the books for planned unit developments that would allow examination of, of changes from just the straight requirements of your subdivision ordinance. Uh, that, that requires some other things to be, to be looked at, but there are tools in place in your code right now that would allow for that.
That's what I was just gonna say, maybe the council can look at maybe being a little aware of maybe changing that ordinance, may not be a good idea.
Well, that's why we're here, Brian was coming for to make that request, and, uh, you can't make the exception for this one project.
Correct.
You have to change the code so it's applied fairly to everybody.
But.
And having talked with Brian about this last week, I spent several hours last week doing some research. As we've talked about here for the last couple of years about how we get housing in that price point, um, that's not uncommon across the country, and there's been several communities and professionals have taken a look at this. Um, we are seeing more and more now communities considering reducing minimum lot size and even lifting some of the parking requirements, um, to help get down into those price points. Uh, there was a study by George Mason University, uh, that was released this last spring. Uh, they surveyed four communities down in Texas, they were, um, I don't know, for the sake of the conversation, but the, the communities were Frisco, Texas, Flugerville, Texas, Brown Rock, and Pearlland, Texas, where they did a study, and basically found that there is a correlation between the minimum lot size requirements and the sizes of lots that developers will build. In other words, when you set that minimum lot size requirement, more, the bulk of your lots constructed will be at that minimum size. They typically don't go much bigger than that, but they'll only go that big, and, um, and so basically the point of that is, is that we do control lot size and how much property people buy and are responsible for through our codes and ordinances. And so there are several communities, um, across the country, um, that are considering, uh, reducing lot sizes and potentially even, uh, again, lifting some of the requirements regarding parking restrictions. Uh, but before we went any further with that, we wanted to see what the attitude of the council was, because really what this is, is this is a, a cultural and aesthetic decision of the community.
Right.
Right? So in big cities, they're, they've been using small lots since cities were being built. Uh, you, and you get out into the opposite extreme in the rural areas, and they can have a lot, a minimum lot size requirement of one acre, um, depending on what that community wants it to look and feel like, and that's what this is. The council sets that directive by the code and ordinances of the city, and right now ours are set, and he's asking that be considered to be a little bit smaller. And we are seeing that trend, and there is some correlation to the final cost of the sale of the home, uh, because, and it, and it does tie and correlate directly to, uh, minimum lot size.
Well, I mean, the one thing we do know is that land's not getting any cheaper, and we're not getting more of it.
We also know there is a lot of apartments, I'm glad you said that, so it's nice to have single family houses, maybe to be able to sell.
Well, and your minimum square footage on your residential is eight hundred, is that accurate? I mean, that's one of the, so you can build, yeah, you can build an eight hundred square foot house, but you still have to buy that fifty-five thousand dollar lot, and there's no, there's no way that works today. It's just a change of, the cost of construction from the last nine years is, um, you know, almost, really soon.
I mean, when I got into the business, we were, um, we were building at about ninety a square foot, and now we're building at, like, a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty a square foot. I mean, I know when, I know when the first time I met you, you were building at about one sixty, and I think now you barely touching two thirty, you know, to be able to do anything.
It's, uh, it costs a lot of money.
Right.
So, pardon my ignorance, um, 'cause the, the minimum lot size is like seven thousand and some change, square feet?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand. Uh, where did we get that number from? Like, why did we, why did we settle on, on seven thousand? What was the, does anyone recall with the justification or rationalization for that?
It's probably been there longer than most of us, the staff have been here.
Yeah. It's been there forever.
It's been there since at least ninety-two, I mean, the general, the general answers would be the things Harold's talked about, that was the aesthetic.
The aesthetics, how much green space you have, how close are the houses together, um, you know, room for flower beds and fences and all those types of things that aesthetically the previous council wanted this community to look like, and that was the smallest they were willing to allow. And again, that is a cultural and aesthetic decision of the council and the community of what they want to allow in their community or not allow.
I would be more than happy to at least have the conversation about, uh, liberalizing the, the regulations as far as that's concerned.
I also think that Slim and I are on traffic too, so it's gonna be interesting, you've got a four bedroom house with a one car garage, like I said, you're gonna have probably three on the street, and then if you have a whole bunch of those, I don't think you can do anything with that, correct?
Well, if you, I, you would have to look at the parking requirement or providing overflow parking somewhere else, um, you know, like what we've experienced since Savannah Commons, where the driveways are literally so close to each other, you can't.
Same with Caleb's, they're kind of movie theater.
The two driveways, and so you could be looking at, on a forty foot wide lot and you had a twenty-four foot wide drive, you may need to always build so the two drives are next to each other, so that you freed up in another forty feet in between for some on-street parking, and then, um, normally the parking is, on the street is not counted towards your requirement, it's the grade.
Right.
So all that would have to be, have to be looked at.
The purpose tonight was to see what the aptitude of the council was, whether it's a, a dead on arrival, no, we like the minimum lot size where it's at, we're not willing to consider changing it anymore. If the council is interested in changing it, then there's some significant discussion that we need to have in it, and I do have several concerns, which can be addressed, but we need to have a conversation about it. One would be if you're, is if you're gonna loosen up parking restrictions, does that mean we're gonna allow on-street parking? And for public safety reasons, we have to have a certain enough width that we can get a fire truck through there in case it's needed. Or a snowplow, well, then our snow runs is being placed, and we'll have to move off the street somewhere, right? But, um, um, but those are things we need to consider. My other concern is, is it, is as you increase density, they're gonna have less yard, they're gonna have more need for recreation space. So what you do about bike trails, walking trails, parks, those types of things, 'cause in order to have a healthy, viable, active community, the more we have in our private space, the more we're gonna need in public space to be able to do that. Um, so there, I'm not a, I, I think it's a worthwhile, valuable conversation to have, and I think it's probably the best approach that we could probably take to how we get to that price point that we've been talking about needing, uh, within our community. Um, but there are some cons to it that I think that we need to think through, and I would also probably suggest that whatever the council decides to do, that you put a sunset on whatever those requirements are, so you have some time to test it out and make sure it's working before it becomes permanently on the books, until council chooses to change it in the future, that will force a conversation with the council, come back, reevaluate, is it working the way we need it? Tweak it and either renew it permanently or, or move out the sunset, or if it's not working, is to remove that from the code, and it sunsets and it's no longer effective, and then whatever's built is grandfathered in, and that was some other things that some of the other communities were looking at, that were, uh, were doing this approach, so.
Personally, I'm extremely excited about it, I think it's very positive. I do understand the follow-on of public spaces, but I'm obviously an advocate of parks and et cetera. Um, as a resident of Savannah Commons, we do okay with it, there, there are issues on parking in the streets and stuff, but beautiful neighborhood, and it was at an extremely affordable price point that I could pay off early and debt-free, and I think this is a good opportunity. Yeah, it has a pool, and if you put a couple spaces in there where you find it where kids can play, I mean, we have a lot of kids, and it's, it's fun.
Yeah, there's gonna be city sidewalk all along the whole back of that, uh, with staff, I mean.
But I do like the sunset idea, 'cause then there's a, if we decide that it was a neat idea, but it's not practical, then, I like it, I'm, this is my happy face.
Most of the time, in a starter house community too, I mean, if you're gonna build, I never would've thought a hundred and eighty thousand would've been a starter house, but, uh, so we have a starter house, and then, then you have the move-up market, you know, where most of the.
Well, that's a question I would ask since we're having a discussion, um, can you, can you work on figuring out ways you can drop it a little bit even? Because a hundred and eighty's still a hard.
Yeah, the, like.
Yeah, but I, I'll tell you right now, a hundred and eighty is, I mean, because Foxridge, and I think it was built for what, sixty thousand when they started building those?
Forty-nine-nine.
You know, Fox, Foxridge, two months ago, broke the hundred and seventy thousand dollar barrier that I thought I would never see, and as soon as it broke the barrier, four houses went on the market right in that same number, so as soon as it breaks it, you now have the comp, as soon as you have the comp, they're immediately putting them on the market using that comp to get the, the, the appraisals, so.
I understand the concept.
A one, a one eighty build is, a one eighty build is probably the bottom, that's probably the bottom of a build, you know.
In ninety-eight, we put a subdivision in, it costed a hundred and twenty-four dollars a foot to put the street in, and that was all the utilities and everything, so today we're, you know, all those three hundred and fifty's gonna touch.
Issues with infill properties or stuff.
Casey, what do you think? We've been quiet.
The only way to go about this is to change the overall ordinance, there's no other ways to look at it.
That is correct, you'd have to change the minimum lot requirements.
Other than the P U D.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did you?
Which we've discussed with Mr. Coulson, but he didn't feel that, worked with his project, and he said, well, the only other way to that then is to change the ordinance for everybody.
I, I was just asking, like, since it's already R four, I didn't know if you can, and I'm not the attorney, but if you can add an amendment that you have an R four property, but I'm going actually down, I'm going to an R one, so there's some, to protect everything in town, it's already, already be R one that they can't use the same thing. So it's really going down in numbers, I mean, like, if I, I'm not building a four-story apartment, but technically it's zoned for that, you know, and I'd have to have my own parking.
There's multiple options, and there's multiple things to discuss here, but yes, it can be controlled through being only allowed in specific zones. We do create a whole zoning designation that's an overlay in specific areas and control where these minimum lot sizes are, are allowed, so they're not just allowed everywhere across town, I mean, all of that is up for discussion, uh, depending on what the aptitude of the council is and what they would like to do.
And I, reaching back to the, the Lions Gate development, uh, one of the complaints that, uh, I heard was it was supposed to be below a certain price point, and then when they came in, they were like, well, we can't do that price point, it doesn't make any, we, we just can't hit it, and part of that was the, the lot size.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for the residents, but that would probably be a touch twenty-two, I don't know that they would want, um,
More units.
More density.
Right, right.
At a lower price point right next to them.
Right, that's, that, my issue, or my statement's not about, well, the, the residents were asking for is the frustration of the developers who said, we want to fill this niche, but we can't fill this niche because of the cost, the, the minimum size.
And again, remember how I started the conversation was with that study I had with George Mason.
Right.
When you lower that minimum lot size requirement, that is the lot size that your home builders are gonna build at.
Yep.
Uh, probably seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of the lots they build are gonna be at that minimum lot size, and they're not gonna build them much bigger than that.
There's gonna be a reason why it's been on the books this long, like you said, that the lot size and the setbacks.
That's probably the common comparison across.
Yeah, there was, I, I would have to look, but there's standard state enabling legislation, and my guess is that was what the state or state enabling legislation was. You look at our zoning ordinance here, especially the original nineteen ninety-two version before we started amending it over the years, it, that's what it was. And so I, I would think if we looked back at that, or if you compare it to a lot of smaller communities.
Right, other than Texas.
Well, as a kid, culture, we've just started growing so big, we consume so much, energy efficiency of these bigger houses, material consumption, and, I mean, I, I know I'm a nature smurf sort of person, but sometimes this livable as opposed to giant, so.
And I.
I think there's a lot of benefits to.
Yeah, I think so too, I think, 'cause like I said again, that we've got a lot of apartments, fast food and apartments is kind of what Warrensburg's been, so it'd be nice to see some affordable housing for some of the people, instead of Sedalian and Lisa, maybe they could come here and live instead of a fourplex.
Right.
We got enough of those.
So does it sound like, or at least to me, it sounds like there's at least the interest of the council to discuss it, and it's worth our time to.
I think it's really wor, I think it's definitely worth discussing, I mean, because that's.
I think it is, I'm not gonna say yes or no right now, I think it'd be a nice discussion.
So I guess, I guess my question is, is the, the new guy, is, do we need to make a motion to say, yes, let's discuss it, or do we ju, do we need to take a vote of interest, or?
I think we just give.
What do we need to do?
I think we just give staff instructions on what the move forward on.
I'll bring it back in a future.
Well, this not vote thing is only at all.
It, it will, the, the actual ordinance, or even if we, um, sometimes when they're very large substantive, we take talking points back, we get a read on those, but, the minimum, you would take the written draft ordinance to them, uh, you'll need their recommendation, party you being able to have.
It'd be nice to talk to a few other builders and see, other than it just, you know.
The community needs to chime in as well, I mean, the, the, I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of people with, with an opinion on, on something like this.
There's gonna be a lot.
Don't you say.
I'm aware.
This is over on the east side of Walmart on, uh, the city's ground, seven A, that, uh, next to the new veterans retirement.
Seven A, that, um, next to the new veterans retirement facility, which is here. Just looks around, around that. The park is across the street down here.
So I mean, you, I mean, I'd see you got two plans there, but I mean, are you really?
Yeah, this is the town home and this was the residential, but, um.
Are you really wanting to build single-family homes there instead of fourplexes?
Correct. Yeah, we did this, we did the single-family first.
Right.
On a concept and it wouldn't get, allow enough lots to, to do the infrastructure and development. You're gonna get back up to two hundred and thirty thousand or houses, you know, on average. So that was, there's quite a bit of excavating work over there and stuff like that on that particular project. Um, we're just trying to hit that price point. A one-eighty is what we're, what we're after, yeah, for a new house.
Well, I'd be willing to consider, but I would, uh, very much caution, uh, the discussion as we move forward. This is a complete cultural change in our community. And I, last year I had several developers approaching me from the city, uh, when I was in Leadership Missouri, asking us to change our density. That's what they've been doing in the city and, and we just need to decide if this is right for, for Warrensburg. And so we took a lot of heat by people building at what is the current minimum right now in Lions Gate. And this is looking at taking that even smaller. And so.
Yeah, this.
I'd be interested in seeing the studies. Um, I would rather go about it if there's another way. I think we should consider that and I'd like to hear more about that. Um, but if there is no other way, um, I, I'd be willing to consider. But I think we should be cautious, cause we're not just making a decision on this development. This is the future of Warrensburg.
The PUD is already on your ordinances. It's already allowed. It's whether or not the developer and the investors want to use that mechanism. And some of them haven't been real excited.
So what is the pros and the cons to using a PUD?
So for instance, Savannah Commons is the PUD, the, all of it is, but the, the east half is, is the more common PUD type of approach. So what it does is it says, this is your lot, your, your original parcel you're starting with is seventeen acres. And that would allow you, let's say in an R four, three hundred units. And it allows you to cluster those in areas to protect other open space or green space or, or natural amenities. If there are none of those, then you create them. And you, so you can, um, you can reduce the setbacks all the way down to, uh, essentially zero so that you own the footprint of the unit and none of the land around it. And all the land around it is held in common ownership. That's the case in, in Savannah Commons. And so that, um, what it requires though, you, you can, so you, you have a lot of leverage in, in, you should get the same amount of units, but you're going to, it's not gonna look traditional, cause you're gonna be able to move those setbacks way lower if you want. It does still require that even if you build private streets, that they are as wide and constructed like a city street. That was not the case when we did Savannah Commons. That has been an issue with council and them over the years. And so that law did get changed since that project was done. Um, but if it is a private street and it's still built to the city standard, then that can reduce even your setback from the street down. So not just your side and your rear, but your setback from the streets even. Uh, doesn't change, doesn't change your parking requirements, um, can change how you provide them. So some are provided in overflow instead of on, cause none of it's in the lot, right? It's all in the common area.
It could be. It could be depending on how those things are, how those setbacks are adjusted.
It could be, yeah. Um, the main thing is that it locks you in. Your plat is your site plan and it locks you into that. So you have to know and a friend in exactly what you're building and you are forever committed to that. Because to start changing it means a replat process, means coming back to council. So when you get to this particular unit and it's a custom build for someone and they say, I drive an extra long pickup truck. Can you add two feet to the garage? The answer is no. Because that would require coming back and replating the whole project. And now it's not just Brian Colson owning all the land, it's you and you and you. And we have fifty other homeowners who have to sign the plat. We all have to agree to the same replat.
Okay, I can see why somebody would like that.
That's if the setback's set at zero.
Yeah.
And typically they are on a PUD, what I've seen on all the different ones, cause they wanna maximize their, you know, density, I mean.
It doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be that. Country View Villas is not that way off Country View Lane. Those are, uh, they, they committed to a building envelope and then typical building footprints. Um, but they have slightly more flexibility, um, because they committed, all their open space, green space, common area calculations, assume that the whole building envelope is a hundred percent covered. You might not then build it that way, but you assumed it would be in the approval. But again, if you needed to build bigger than that envelope, you'd be back in here.
But also we gotta consider, even though this house sold to a family and this family's leaving cause they're military, now I'm gonna put four students in here. I got four cars, where we gonna put them? You know what I mean? This is a house that we're gonna do as a single dwelling, but it also could end up a, you know, for, for people. So then you're gonna have problems with cars.
There's a lot of moving parts here. A lot of things to consider, um, unwilling to discuss, but we need to.
Cautious.
Be cautious in my opinion.
I'm gonna put it back on the agenda probably in October. Give the staff some time to do some research and get some material to you, talking points and decision points with regards to that. So that, uh, you guys can have a more informed conversation.
Do you like these back?
No, thank you. Thank you though. Thanks for.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda, item eight.
I would say no, looking at the crowd.
Negative. All right. Uh, item nine, mayoral appointments. Uh, we just have one appointment today. I believe, uh, council was emailed, uh, information, uh, Friday. I'd like to appoint Hank Heyman to the parking rec board.
If approved. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Homberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Item number ten, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. Anybody got anything? All right, moving on to city manager report, Harold.
Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to introduce Chief Robert Shaw, our new fire chief. Um, he came on board last week. Excited to have him here from Illinois. And, uh, he'll have his first opportunity to meet with department heads tomorrow as well. But, uh, you know, we're excited to have him and his wife as part of our community and as part of our, our team. Uh, I have great expectations for him and helping move our good department to be even better than what it is now. And along with that, I would like to thank, uh, interim chief Doyle Oxley for the job he did in the interim. He did an excellent job. Uh, we did have a few, uh, internal matters to deal with while he was in that position and, uh, he did well. And, uh, I think our department and our community are lucky to have him serving us in many capacities. I don't know that I have much else this evening. I will say, um, so we'll have another council meeting here in September. Of course, we'll have the two in October, but I will be out of the office quite a bit in October for some conferences and some meetings. Uh, early October, I have a trip, uh, again with, uh, Wyman Area Leadership Council to DC. We're gonna attend a conference and while we're there, we're also gonna do a visit to the Pentagon with the leadership there again, right through yards to Wyman Air Force Base. Then, uh, and then after our first council meeting, I think, uh, many of us are headed to Chicago for the ICSC conference. And, uh, I think I get back Friday and Saturday, I turn around and leave for Nashville for the International City Manager Association Conference the next week. So I'll be out of the office for about two and a half weeks in the month of October, uh, in and out in between. So, uh, we're trying to get as much done as we can, uh, before that and try to keep October fairly light as far as issues and, uh, items on the agenda and those types of things. But I have full confidence in staff that all things will continue to move and progress forward in a positive manner, uh, as, as they always do. But I just wanted to give you a forewarning that, uh, I may not be seeing a whole lot other than the council meeting in October.
Director of Finance report, Matthew?
Uh, revenues for, uh, August were up almost eleven percent over August of last year. Um, that puts us back about, uh, now we're down to one point six five percent year-to-date under last year's numbers. Uh, but we are on, we're just under one percent down from the budgeted number. So, so we're, we're pretty close on, on what was budgeted for revenues. Uh, and then I wanted to recognize Rachel Benfield for, uh, the work she's done with the budget and, and picking up slack, doing AP work. Uh, she really helped out on the budget and, and, and helped me out a lot this year.
We filled the GIS coordinator position. Roman Hicks was promoted into that position effective today. So, uh, we are very close to posting the property maintenance position, hoping maybe to get that done by the end of the week. If not, I think we can get it done next week.
Come on?
I'll look at Grace if you.
My first flash, last meeting, we did, uh, today receive a traffic impact survey from, from Houston Sheriff's store. Uh, recommendation of changes in existing additions or loss of service for the signal, uh, and the way they're set up right now. So for council's information, we digged that report. Uh, we're scheduled for a walk down of the Roundabout project tomorrow afternoon. Uh, for anything that deficiencies or improvements need to be done out there on that project. And just before council meeting, uh, I was called and, uh, went up and looked at and pulled in the gate and knew water main up there, spark leak. So, so as I get out of the meeting, I'll make sure to find what we've got there.
No rest for the weary, right?
Yeah.
Randy?
That's it.
Nothing additional?
Suzanne?
I just wanted to say thank you very much to our community members who came out and cleaned up the burg on our last Friday and Saturday. Uh, I think we, we made a good impression and hopefully next year it'll get bigger. And, um, to remind you that base community council feature, Warrensburg is the featured day on the eighteenth of September. The RSVP for the luncheon has actually been extended, so you have until tomorrow's RSVP if you haven't done that. And Paint the Town Red was a great success this year. We had a lot of businesses participating in Paint the Town Reds, but it looks good out there.
Jill, you're on Main Street. Greg?
As far as applied to pressure, we're gonna get that taken care of.
Next week is fine.
Nothing, nothing else.
Uh, officially welcome, Bob?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the opportunity to serve. And I don't really have anything yet. I'm just getting my feet.
Um, I wanted to share a very positive thing that Harold sent to me just before the meeting, um, on review the burg about the Warrensburg Police Department. You always hear about the negative things, so this person, uh, just wanted to extend a thank you to the Warrensburg officer who assisted a gentleman from Clinton whose car broke down on Fifty Highway in the vicinity of Business Thirteen overpass around three PM Saturday, September seventh. He not only tried to help him going, but stayed with him for quite some time. Unbeknownst to the officer, this man had multiple heart attacks and was extremely appreciative. These acts of kindness and service rarely, rarely get reported. All we hear are the bashing of our police on the news. Just found out it was Tim Dorment, so just wanna recognize Tim, longtime employee with a servant's heart. And, uh, really does a great job every day. And, and again, most of what, that they do, um, goes unnoticed, which is how it should be. We're, we kinda serve in the background. We don't serve for the, the praise. And then, uh, lastly, this Friday, coming out to the Rise Gala, I will be emceeing the event. Um, I'm not really sure what to expect, but there is a surprise for all of you. Uh, I will be doing something that's way out of my comfort zone. So it might be one of those things that ends up on YouTube somewhere and.
Guaranteed.
I got two tickets on the phone, it'll be on YouTube.
So then on Saturday, I'm still gainfully employed. Otherwise, uh, my wife might be selling her house.
She's staying here going.
She's staying.
And that's Saturday, right?
Saturday night, yeah.
It is Saturday.
Did I say Friday?
Yeah, you did say Friday, it's Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday night, yeah. It's not more.
And I wanted to, um, I wanted to thank the Warrensburg Police Department for coming out to the Hawthorne Plaza event and the fire department for bringing out the new trucks. And I had never seen the, the, the ladder extended with all the lights lit up. Wanted out, pretty cool. I'd never seen that before. And then, of course, you know, me being a dog fanatic, you know, I mean, Adam, you know, Sergeant Wade, Adam Wade came out there and did a demo. That was one of the ones that I've probably never seen. He was actually, and I told him, I said, you're probably crazier than me right this minute. I said, but he got into a car with nothing but more than an arm sleeve on and had.
He jumped in.
Had the sheriff's department's dog boss jump into the car and try to drag him out of the car, you know? So it's like, I'm like, that's crazier than me. I'll do a lot of stuff when it comes to dogs, but, you know. But no, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank the guys for coming out and supporting that event. So it was a fantastic community event and I think we had about three hundred people to show up for it.
It was a nice night.
Scott?
Good.
Any need for a closed session, Harold? All right. Anything else we need to call? Everybody have a good night.
Hey, up for eight?
The signee.